I've been out of practice for a while. My name is Paul Sweet. I live 260 New Road in Musup, Maryland. My question, last time I was here, we talked about the audit. My understanding is you guys made a lot of improvements and you're moving on and we're going to have an audit, right? And that's a good thing. I want you to know that. Can you please tell me tonight, as I look at this paperwork, and last time I was here, we had a .53 tax increase in the mill rate. Has anything happened to that since that last referendum?
We made some additional adjustments and now we're closing a .11.
.11? That's pretty amazing. Can I ask a question? I don't know when the last actuarial study had been done, but the pension plan, we funded somewhere in the 90% mark, something like that?
Correct.
But the balance is strong, right?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's a good thing and I wish you luck. Thank you very much.
Our gang in Central Village. After looking over the two budgets, I'd like to share some comments to consider in future budget negotiations. First, I'd like to give you a little history. Coming into 2021 budget, this goes back to when we got elected. 2021 budget, we had already seen two years of mill increases. 1718 was a .87, 1920 was a .37. COVID hit that year, forcing us to a zero-mill increase. The education budget was cut $346,000. The town was cut $340,000. Also in this budget year, the state cut ECS funding by $173,130 in special ed. They cut altogether at $315,251 for a total of $488,381. The town helped the education department that year with $800,000 from the fund balance to go to pension to bring that up. In 2122, we had another zero-mill increase with an increase on the town side of $143,000 and the education side $707,000. The town contributed an additional $200,000 to the education pension this year. 2223 saw a slight decrease in the mill rate due largely by the value of used vehicles going off. The town budget increased by $334,000, education by $591,000. 2324 was a year of rebounds. The mill rate lowered by about 7.5 points. There was still an increase in taxes. The town raised its budget $354,000. Education raised theirs $931,000. So in the four years Kevin's been first electman, I've seen him work with department heads to eliminate at least four positions. Task collector went from three positions to two. Town clerk and planning did the same thing. They both went from three to two. We lost a part-time employee in buildings and grounds last year due to cutting it from our budget and replacing it with a full-time, but because of cuts, we lost the full-time position also. So we're down in there. I think we've known from day one that we would need an engineer, also an IT, knowing that the existing IT would retire soon while that day is here. My only fear is that we won't have enough in those lineups to entice good prospects. The new building inspector we are going to need is the same way with salary. I've been paying attention to the town budget weekly for four years, and the only areas that seem to have extra monies consistently are election workers, highway supplies and expenses, and boards and commissions, of which we have cut in each. Election workers twice this year. At this point, our cuts are consisting of supplies in three departments: electricity, computers, and sand and gravel, among others. My new, trying to pick, pick, pick. We have a police department that is in need and we don't have the resources. We lose officers to other towns that do have the resources, and I imagine they will need a larger facility at some point. And myself, I would like to see officers assigned to the schools on a regular basis. Now to the education budget. I took time to look into the education budget a little deeper this year. Things are changing in education, obviously. I just wanted to share what I found and have concerns with. First would be the declining enrollment. It's gone from 2,505 students in 2013 to 1,901. That's a drop of 604 students in 10 years, almost 25%. I don't know how many dropped because they went elsewhere. We do have 446 students. The tuitions to these schools totaled $3145,037. This would be a good place to mention that out-of-town tuitions and local revenues went down to $500,000 after COVID and never rebounded. Also, state funding for ECS, special ed, and adult ed have decreased almost $2 million over the last four years collectively in those four years. The adult ed is in the non-co-op section of the education budget for $100,000, so I guess we pay for that now. Another concern I have is the amount of special ed students we have. Between the six schools, we have 28.45%, ECC at 33.7%, and the high school at 36%. That's 552 of our 1,901 students. However, I guess I've been away from some time here on education. I plan on checking with other districts to see if this is normal. I think it's hard myself. So looking at the lower enrollment, the number of students going elsewhere, and the feasibility of this study showing a need for consolidation, I think eventually we will have to look at cuts to personnel. Salaries on the education side make up 50% of their budget at $22,244,447, and that's not including the overtime or purchase services. This is just salaries. The only other thing I would like to say about this is that we haven't mentioned MBR in two years. I don't even know what it is set at at this point. I don't know. I do know that it can be reduced by the same amount. The state cut to each ECS funding was just $353,444 this year. Perhaps the board will look into that. I will be digging deeper into this budget in the next six months, and I'll be back with all the questions on the education budget. Again, these are just some of my observations. Take them for what they are. I hope it can help in the future budget talks. Also, I would like to say that I noticed at the last meeting, a lot of discussion about splitting the cuts. It prompted me, oh, I didn't bring you up here. If you could explain what this is. Sorry. It prompted me to look at the charter. In Section 24B, it reads, "Any budget which has been rejected by the referendum or town meeting shall be considered in the interim by the Board of Finance. In consultation with the Board of Education if appropriate, which shall revise the rejected budget, shall hold a public hearing and present said revision at the next subsequent referendum or town meeting for acceptance." Learning about your meeting tonight, directly after this meeting, I assume it was to make further adjustments. I hope that the board would follow the charter, restore the town budget to what the vote has passed, and make the adjustments to the rejected education budget. Whether that is an increase or a decrease is up to you. And then I had a question. If you make revisions, according to this charter, if you make revisions tonight after the public hearing, would we have to go back to public hearing? According to the charter, you make your revisions, you go to public hearing, it goes to the vote. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Before you sit down, can you read that again?
What? The charter?
Yeah.
This is 24B. "Any budget which has been rejected by the referendum or town meeting shall be considered in the interim by the Board of Finance, in consultation with the Board of Education if appropriate, which shall revise the rejected budget, shall hold a public hearing, and present said revision at the next subsequent referendum or town meeting for acceptance."
Excuse me, Selectman Gagnon, could you read the whole section, starting from the bottom line, or where he's nerding?
Way back, way back. 24B. "Should the annual or any other town budget referendum fail to adopt the budget as provided in subsection C below, another referendum shall be held within 14 days thereafter until final approval is given. However, if less than 25% of the eligible electors cast ballots at a referendum, then all subsequent voting on the budget shall be at a town meeting. Any budget which has been..."
That's it?
"...any budget that has been rejected by the referendum or town meeting shall be considered in the interim by the Board of Finance, in consultation with the Board of Education if appropriate, which shall revise the rejected budget, shall hold a public hearing, and present said revision at the next subsequent referendum or town meeting for acceptance." Let me continue?
No, that's fine. It refers to the budget.
I'm allowed to vote on it. And if it's not voted on by 25%, then it goes back. As far as...
I think Mr. Brode's point...
As far as revising it, it's clear how it's revised.
As far as Mr. Brode's point, I can clarify that what he's trying to say, the document throughout the document speaks to a warning budget. So when it speaks to revising the budget...
No, it doesn't. The annual town, the annual town budget referendum or town budget meeting, well, the consideration of the town budget, which is comprised of two parts, the annual operating budget and the education budget. It's both, yes. So they're talking, we vote on it in three questions: education, town, capital.
When one fails, they all fail. So it can be three parts.
But, but the revision, which shall revise the rejected budget. There's still three budgets. You only revise the rejected budget. I don't want to argue about this.
Well, no, but that's, that's not, I think some of us don't interpret it that way.
Good evening. Carla Distardens, again. I pulled up the charter on the town website, and there's an important section in Item B that says, "Should the annual or any other town budget referendum fail to adopt the budget, comma, as provided in subsection C, comma." So you have to go down and read subsection C first, and that is the language that says it's presented as three questions. However, a vote to reject any of these three will constitute a rejection of the budget. So the language you read was correct, however, it is referring to a subsection C. So you have to then read subsection three to get the full definition and meaning, and this is why I hope everyone goes to charter revision commission meetings. There are public hearings. It is on the charter. We need to make this charter easier to read, easier to understand, and easier to apply, and that should include town referendum on all budget votes. Thank you.
Good evening. Josh Pathier, 365 Musup Pond Road, Musup, Connecticut. This is going to be kind of disjointed. I'm just kind of reacting to different things that were said. I believe that the selectmen superintendent and the boards and Board of Selectmen have all come through this budget and come up with a very reasonable budget request. It's lower than the current rate of inflation and Mr. Tarrellwood made some comments about shared services. I think that's always a good idea, but if those were to be implemented, it'd still be a few years down the line before you gain any savings from that. I believe the police HBAC project, if that's going to make the system more efficient, it's probably wise in keeping that in place. As for the comments about student enrollment, I believe it's basically in a negative feedback loop where disinvestment in the school system is causing people to choose to send their kids elsewhere and, you know, so on and so forth. As my kids move out of the house and start careers and they're surveying where they should live and start their careers as engineers or lawyers or whatever, they're going to probably consider that, like, am I going to move to a place that invests in the infrastructure and the education and the other systems in place, or am I going to choose to move somewhere? That's all I have.
Jenny Kipsakovich, Gender Ruth. For context, I am a parent, I'm a wife, I'm a farmer, a small business owner. I am the chair of two appointed commissions in town, and I'm committed to Plainfield. I come to many of the commission meetings that take place across the town, and I will tell you that I involve our children, who have been attending with us regularly, who attend Plainfield schools. I will tell you that we're often by ourselves. So I concur with the sentiments that Carla Distardens shared earlier. We need to do a better part in activating our community. We need to encourage our children to be part of this process. We need to text. We need to use Facebook. We need to phone a friend. It is our job to encourage other people to participate. So when I cast my ballot, I bring my children. They can't cast a ballot, but they can watch the process. So I charge everybody in this room, which sadly is only about 75 people, which is not really reflective of a great turnout, but neither is our voting. So I encourage our budget to have just the essentials. We need our police department to have the resources that they have to have in order for them to be safe, to keep us safe. We need our roads maintained regardless of the season, and we need to educate our children. I'm giving you this only. You don't need to hear me speak only. But we do need to eliminate the frills. In my household, if I have to cut my budget, it's, you know, I'm not going to go out to eat once a week. I go out to eat once a month. So I really strongly encourage you to think about what can go and what do we absolutely need. So I encourage the town of Plainfield to phone a friend and get out and vote.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see everybody again. My name's Matt Raydamp from Musup, former-appointed Board of Ed member, former-appointed Board of Finance alternate, rotating Charter Revision Commission member. I thoroughly enjoy living in this town with my four children and happy wife, and two of those children are in Plainfield Public Schools. How we got to this point, I think, can quite easily be summarized by putting together most of the comments that were already spoken aloud this evening, but in a nutshell, we're here because the budget failed. We had a close budget vote on the town side. We had a somewhat decisive rejection of the Board of Ed budget, and then we had the capital budget, which seemed to sail through without too much issue. There's some question about whether no votes against the Board of Ed budget is due to people believing the number is too low. I guess we all have to rely on our anecdotal evidence for that, but that's not, not something I think we can truly use as a wedge to lean either way when considering what the action item that the Board of Finance would be looking at tonight, which I assume will be to either stick with your requested reductions in the increased budgets or to add on or change that number. Last year was a doozy of a year for most homeowners, most people who have taxable property in the town due to the reevaluations, and even though the mill rate did go down, we did still see pretty meaningful tax increases across the board. We had to revisit our budget process through that whole ordeal last year as well. This year, it is my opinion that there is still quite a bit of residual feedback from that budget here. There are still property valuations that are at a level where I don't think it's too crazy to say a lot of folks probably couldn't afford to finance their own homes at these reappraised levels, given where interest rates are right now. So that's where the town seems to, and these are perfectly valid arguments, I feel, being brought forward by the school system and those who are employed by it or have, or who are stakeholders in the process, the children, their family, and the school system. But we have to understand that the very factors that are driving all of these costs up, both in terms of salaries, but also your food costs, it's inflation. This is also something that a lot of the town taxpayers are also struggling with quite heavily. And they don't get to go to a vote to gauge how much inflation they're going to be able to stomach this year, right? Those are problems that are long, long in process and far, far beyond what this local town meeting can try to address and solve. All of that being said, it is nice to see that we have around 70 or 80 folks that have showed up. It would be wonderful if we had more. It would be wonderful if there wasn't too much fear of getting up to speak, but understanding public speaking is an issue. I would also recommend submitting your emails, writing your letters, getting them onto the record, because they do read them, they do pay attention to them. I've gotten a chance to know many of these members up there, those who I haven't gotten a chance to meet yet. I look forward to hopefully seeing them on more upbeat circumstances, but they do listen. They do listen. They may not agree with you, but they will listen, and that counts for something. So to wrap up my comments tonight, I would say, given, given the economic circumstances that have prevailed in town, given the inflation issue that we're still dealing with year over year over year, and looking at where the budgets are currently, that it was rejected and that we are going through this process again, I would recommend that the Board of Ed not make any further adjustments to where they are currently with the ask to the Board of Ed. I would ask for a little bit more detail on why we are asking the town side to reduce their amount of requested budget increase, simply on the basis that it wasn't approved part of the budget. Not saying that there's a preferred course of action, but I think that should be spoken to in a little bit more detail, given that it seemed to go a different course last year with how that was handled. And I would truly, truly hope that we get a nice, robust attendance on that June 3rd meeting. I will echo the previous comments that we should perhaps, if it hasn't already elapsed, look at a larger venue or perhaps have some plans for what the contingency of voting may be should capacity be exceeded. And that would just be, I think, a good housekeeping for making sure the process goes as smoothly and without interruption or confusion as possible. Thank you, and have a pleasant evening.
I'm going to bury her. I'll keep mine short. I think we already cut too much. I have my fifth and sixth kid going to school now, and I think the school system's done a really good job with them. I have a son that went into school that couldn't even talk, and now he's out of all the special programs. And I'm definitely happy with the Plainfield School and don't want to see any more cut. Thanks.
Good evening. Kristy Haskell, I'm Linda Lane, Plainfield. I'm actually going to read on behalf of my son, who was supposed to be here with my husband, but unfortunately had a playground incident and had to go home for bedtime. During my son's time at Plainfield Central Middle School, the past three years, he has seen a rotation of seven teachers. One of those teachers was promoted to a position at the high school. Six of those teachers left the district for other, hey, other positions. It impacted him. It's no secret he'd be proud to stand here and tell you he has autism. He strongly advocates for himself, but the amount of change that he sees on a day-to-day basis in our schools, understaffed, no teacher to have, be able to have class to where it ends up as a study hall, no work being accomplished, disruptions in the classrooms. The budget cuts have taken the toll. It's impacting him. We watched several teachers, and we can't fault them, go to other communities where they're getting top step, and it's not something that we can watch, we can handle. I just ask you, please, no more cuts for our students. They deserve so much more. They're going through so many struggles, and with proper funding, I know that Plainfield, I believe in Plainfield. I've served for the past almost 13 years now, and I believe in Plainfield, and I know when we properly fund our schools, we can do so much. Our students are so brave, they're so smart, our teachers, our staff are so talented, and with proper funding, I know that we can, we can do great things. So please, no more further cuts. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Gold Bull, Highland Street, One Highland Street Extension in Musup. Please bear with me because I am extremely nervous. I planned nothing to speak in front of you. However, on behalf of so many dedicated staff, I feel that my voice needs to be heard. My journey in the public school system began, I'm a mother of four children who have all proudly graduated from the Plainfield High School. I began as a parent volunteer at Musup Elementary School. It was my first introduction to what really happened behind the work, the walls of the school. I think everybody should have to step foot into a classroom to see what educators are going through. When I tell you how proud I am that my 22-year-old son is a graduate of Ellis Tech and makes more money than I do with a master's degree, I'm proud for my son, but that speaks volumes as an educator. The things that I saw as a parent, that was when, I will be honest, I just, I realized that votes are important. I don't understand why we do not have more residents in town, but I've heard that we are not providing enough, whether we are blasting out on Facebook, please, whether we are, we need to get the word out about voting. Okay, I then went on to become a paraprofessional, which I was very proud to do. Our paraprofessionals are a necessity in this district. Teachers cannot do their jobs without paraprofessionals, and yet we stand to lose them. I had a paraprofessional who very graciously accepted a different position still within our district, but her loss was felt by not only me, but by every one of the children that she serves in my classroom. There is no extra money. For those of you that's, that are sitting here painstakingly having to decide what to cut, I do not know what else to say. I give you all the props, but please save our schools. I'm standing here before you shaking. As a parent, I am now a teacher. I will tell you that we have children who are coming in hungry, and we take care of their needs. They are coming in completely exposed to trauma. I am not just an educator. I am there. I went to a meeting at the high school until 5:00. I then went to a baseball game for one of my former students because he asked, and then I am here this evening. I do not work 9 to 3, and I did not take this job to have my summers off. I am standing here just like those people behind me because what we do is important, and we cannot do this job without the support of our town. I don't, I truly feel that we need to be getting more people involved, parents, Board of Ed. My father lives in a retirement community of my parents, and I... My father lives in a retirement community, my parents, and I understand those of you who no longer have children in, in the school systems. And I apologize for those of you on fixed budgets. But what my father has seen, having a daughter as an educator, is no matter if you have twelve children, no children, education is important. We have teachers leaving this district to sell cars and to go work elsewhere, because quite frankly, what we do every day is worse than the battlefields. It feels that way sometimes. And it also feels that when we stand here and don't feel supported, that what we do is not valuable, and there is nothing farther from the truth. You ask any child, "I have a former student that comes to see me every morning, Mrs. Goldblum, you are the reason I come to school." So when I stand before you, it is not just as an educator, but as a person with a huge heart that wants what's best for this town. Whether that is through my educating them, whether that is through talking them through real-world problems, situations in their homes, we do it all. And we do not do it for the money. But I will tell you that unless we are placed with value, you will not be standing here having to cut budgets because there will be nobody left to cut.
Uh, Joe Signorano, twelve Twenty-One Launch Road. Twelve Twenty-One Launch Road. Own cage, cage construction, cage equipment, carry guns, same with properties. Feel a lot invested in this town. Um, I don't envy you in any way. This job you guys got sucks. Oh, I apologize, I swear. I'll try not to. Um, I pay a lot of taxes in this town. So I, I hope that most of the time it gets spent right. Is this better? Alright, so I hope the money that we pay, the taxes that, uh, we pay into this town are getting spent right. I pay quite a bit attention to what's going on. Um, I know that, how hard it is to cut. What do you have to do for? Not everybody wants to hear me. Alright. Can you hear me now? Did you hear everything I said before now? Alright. Something happened, anybody else? I'm trying to say, and I guess, you guys did your job, you cut as much as you can. I think this budget should pass the way it is now. Um, I know how hard it is to cut people's jobs. Um, I've had to do it myself. I have twenty-seven employees. We all make decisions that we don't wanna have to make. We all make cuts where we don't have to. When you do have to make cuts, you gotta use your head where you're made. When I hire somebody, I feel that I hire, I'm now responsible for them and their family, their well-being, their livelihood. So letting somebody go, or cutting their pay, or not giving them the opportunity to grow, is on me. And it is a very hard decision to make when you know you've only got a certain amount of money to play with. I think the budget now is the best you guys are gonna do with what you got. I think it should pass. This is my opinion. And, um, I hope you guys will listen. Alright, thanks. Is there anyone else?
Robert Calley, ninety-three O-Halls Road. I wasn't gonna say anything there, no. So I really don't have anything prepared. Um, just to kind of feed off of everyone else, I always, uh, think that, I, I like to see the teachers and everybody speak up and be impassioned for their jobs, for their salaries, uh, for the children especially. Um, just to be sure, though, I, I've spoken against the education budget in the past, I've spoken against the government, the town budget, and I've, it doesn't mean that no one, if you don't, like, if you're not lock and step with, with everybody saying, it doesn't mean that you're against the kids. It doesn't mean that you don't want the children to be educated. And I voted for the budget, this last one. I think the people spoke, it did need to be adjusted. I watched the meeting. I don't, I'm gonna speak with, uh, Joe, uh, as far as, I don't envy you guys. Uh, I might've had some issues, uh, being referred to as a Negative Nelly last year for speaking against the budget, but needless to say, I don't envy you guys. I think the one point one is fine. Uh, I, I know you struggled, I think I tried to count, I think it was nine, uh, motions. It was, uh, quite the meeting, kind of fun to watch. Probably not fun for you guys. I don't know if anybody knows that, they went through nine motions to try and come up.
It was thirteen.
It was that, okay, maybe, I'm sorry, I was counting.
That's okay.
I was, it was a long one. Okay, so they struggled, so I, like I said, I don't envy you guys. It's, it's, it's a tough job, and, uh, you're volunteering, you're not getting paid, um, with all the passion and with everybody coming up, and I'm glad that they do that. But, you gotta remember that the townspeople, the median income, household income, sixty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. We're not, I, I've heard we're, you pat yourself on the back, 'cause we dropped our mill rate, and it's one of the lowest in the state. Well, that's true. Uh, Greenwich, I think, is lower, just to give you some stuff, Stanford, I think, is lower, seventeen other towns have it. But, mill rate is kind of arbitrary, as we know. Last year, I believe, um, was a heavy hit. I mean, I, I, I sometimes feel like I'm, I'm, my parents are older, so I have to speak on people that are on social security and fixed incomes. And I know a lot of the people in the audience, or at home, they don't speak, they don't speak up, because they, they were a great generation, and they just go along and they suffer, and they, they live on what they can make, and I know what my parents make, and last year I saw what their average income was, and I was blown away with that. So, with that said, um, I, I think I feel like we have to remember those people as well, you know, as far as making decisions and whatnot. So, um, thank you very much for what you guys do, and thank you for volunteering. Appreciate it.
June Gagny, Jackson Road, Central Village. I want you to check the Board of Finance, I want you to check that charter, because what he's taught, I am, right now, I am chairman of the Charter Revision Commission, and we are trying to work on getting those three budget votes, so that if one doesn't pass, the other ones can pass. But what Art is talking about, it's a different section, and it is something you need to look at, because it's, it does not say the change, says you have to revote on the town budget. But the town budget, uh, should be, stay the same and not change. So, we're gonna show you where those two sections are. I know we're waiting now to change the other one. The other thing I have to say is, I feel really, I'm having a deja vu experience from two thousand and two, when my son wanted nothing more than to play music in, in school. And they ripped the teacher out from under him in sixth grade, and he had nothing. They had nothing feeding the high school for four years, he had no school music. What he did was something that the teacher made arrangement for him to play with the Wyndham Concert Band. So at twelve years old, he was playing a trombone in the back of a band, an adult band, and he grew up in those bands. So I understand how cuts can really hurt a, a person. He's still, he's thirty-four today, and he's still a musician, and plays many instruments. But that, that was his determination. But I can see, just like with sports and everything else, when those things are ripped out from under you, it can really make a difference in the lives of your children. So I'm not against hacking budgets or anything, and I, I'm having this experience, thinking I know how you feel. Thanks.
Is there anyone else? A burglary challenge. If there's no one else, I would just like to say that I wanna thank everybody for participating. I would also like to thank you for the preparedness and the eloquence with which everyone spoke, uh, also with the consideration, uh, that you put into your words. As Ben's mentioned, uh, we do this on a volunteer basis, but we do this because we wanna serve the town. We do the best we can with the information that we have, and, uh, I hope that, uh, you know, at the end of the day, we, we can move forward, to continue moving forward. A lot of great ideas have been shared, maybe not directly to the budget, but things are certainly worth considering in the future. Um, so with that said, if there's no one else that would like to contribute to the public portion of this evening, um, I will look for somebody to make a motion to adjourn. Come aboard.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second? We have a second? Okay, thank you all for being here. Uh, we are gonna take a short recess. Okay, it is now eight fifty-nine. Uh, we are, the Board of Finance will reconvene their special meeting. Do you all, please? Alright, let's stand, pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, parole call, who would just call, your name is present? Dean Harmon?
Garret Stellway?
Ted Domain is not here tonight. Alright, the first order of business is the review and acceptance of the minutes from the May twenty-first meeting. Alright, so we have a motion to table these minutes to the next meeting. Do I have it made by Don? Do I have a second? Alright, second made by Sean. Alright. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of tabling the minutes of the May twenty-first meeting to our next regular meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? That motion carries. Our only order of business tonight is to discuss and act upon the proposed budget and the feedback that we received from the public hearing. So, um, what are our thoughts?
My thoughts are to move the budget as it is, not to change anything. I guess, like, really what I got.
And that's, that's my thought. Keep it as is and not change it.
So, uh, we wanna stick with the proposed? Two point nine zero mill rate, which is a point one one increase from the previous year. Okay. Alright, can I have that in the form of a motion? Okay, we have a motion to, uh, keep the point one one mill rate, uh, mill rate increase, uh, without any additional changes, and send that forward to a town vote.
Is that correct?
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, a motion made by Lynn, seconded by Linda. Uh, any other discussion? Alright, if there's no other discussion, I'll call for a hand vote, all in favor of the motion on the table, approving, putting forth the budget as is without any additional adjustments, please signify by raising your hand. Alright, that motion carries unanimously. With that in mind, I will now look for a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn made by Lynn, do I have a second? Everybody wants a second to that motion? Okay. Alright, anybody opposed? Thank you all.